All right, good evening. Tonight is November 12th, 2024, and I'm going to open the Board of Selectmen meeting, and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving along on our agenda, we have two meeting minutes to review and approve. The first one is October 15th.
Mr. Chairman, unless there are objections, so moved as submitted.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Second, uh, meeting minutes is October 21st, 2024.
Same motion, Mr. Chairman?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, community relations and announcements.
Dudley Charlton Town takeover derailers Saturday, November 23rd, 2024, and that's at 6:05 PM. Dudley Elementary Car is performing "America the Beautiful." See Town of Charlton Facebook page for more information. All Boards, Departments, Commissions, Communities Meeting is Tuesday, November 19th, that's next week, uh, at 6:00 PM, that's in the Town Hall at the Senior Center. Please RSVP to Mary Devlin at mary devlin at townofcharlton.net or Chelsea Belk at chelsea dot belk at townofcharlton.net, and that's by Tuesday, November 12th. Hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here for open forum?
Do you really?
It's Andrew's birthday.
Oh my God.
Happy birthday.
So we have many cupcakes. I don't know where Mary went, but we have many cupcakes for Andrew's birthday. Happy birthday, Andrew.
Well done.
Happy birthday.
Survived another year.
All right. Any other members here for open forum? Seeing or hearing none, moving on to appointments and resignations.
The first appointment is for a full-time dispatcher position. Sixty-two applications were received for the full-time dispatcher position. Interviews were offered to nine and held by Chief Dowd and Deputy Chief Mason and HR Director Lynn Dyer. They're recommending the appointment of Natalie Stevens with a start date of December 2nd, 2024, and I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
And I see Natalie's out there, so thank you for coming. Uh, motion to approve the appointment?
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, welcome.
Welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Good job, chief.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
I noticed something.
Yes.
Our next appointment is for the Bay Path Student Select Person. Attaches an email from Bay Path's Principal Dean Packard recommending the appointment of 11th grade student, Emma Berry, to serve as the Bay Path Non-Voting Student Representative for the 2024-25 School Year. I'd recommend the board make the appointment, and tonight would be your first meeting.
Emma, it's wonderful to see you and to have you here.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to learning a lot about what's going on at Bay Path over the next year, so very well done. Motion to appoint.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Welcome.
Thank you for stepping in.
The next appointment is for Special Police Officers and Traffic Controller. Attaches a request from Police Chief Dowd asking the board to appoint the following contingent upon completion of background in HR onboarding. Luis Diaz as Special Police Officer, Franny Assad as Special Police Officer, and Marty Triborance as Traffic Controller. I'd recommend the board make the appointments.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
All right, next point is for the Lakes and Ponds Committee. Attaches a recommendation from the Conservation Commission to appoint Thomas Chapman and Andrew Ingles as, or to the Lakes and Ponds Committee. I'd recommend the board make the appointments.
So moved, and thank you, Thomas and Andrew.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, I have a notice of retirement of our Fire Chief. Attaches a notice of retirement from Fire Chief Ed Knopf effective December 23rd, 2024. I'd like to thank him for his time and commitment to the town and wish him well on his retirement. Uh, Chief is here as well, so thank you very much, Chief.
Well done, Chief.
No, you know, the, can we have a talk, or is there anything, anything you want to say?
As long as it's okay with you.
Oh, oh, I bet.
Oh, no, these are just note takes. No prepared speech, nothing like that. What would you like to talk about?
No, I would just hear, and thank you for your service to the town and, and.
I appreciate that. Yep. It's 23 years, I think it's, uh, it's time for somebody else to take the baton.
Yep. It came, it came a little quick. I, I, I mean, I thought it was going to be a year or so from, but it is who it is.
Uh, there's enough personal reasons and professional reasons that, that we don't need to get into in any great depth.
No, 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 not at all.
But I just felt that the department is in a good place right now. So I think it's, it's, uh, it's a good time to step aside.
Yeah, through you, Pete?
Go ahead.
Chief Doug, again, I just want to say thank you, especially for all the work he did on the miscellaneous Fire Department, uh, projects that came on the pipe. I know you were very instrumental, especially in this last one of getting it passed, and, you know, that's going to be a, a great legacy for you in the day. So between that and to your point of leaving the department in great shape, uh, you know, having an ongoing capital plan, et cetera. So again, just want to say thank you and, uh, wish you well. You always have a home here.
I appreciate it.
And for the 23 years of service, which in and of itself is, to me, I think, an achievement, and someone stays in a role for that period of time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No, we're very grateful. Thank you.
Well, good. Oh, and, uh, motion to accept your notice of retirement with extreme regret.
Second with regret.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business?
Yeah, got a new business? All right. Skip ahead to new business.
Right, the Winter Wash Sand Bid Award. Uh, Winter Wash Sand Bids were opened in red on October 24th, 2024, at 10:00 AM. One bid was received from Hillka Construction Co., Inc. in the amount of $21.45 per ton delivered. DPW Superintendent Peel has reviewed the bid and has recommended the board award the bid to Hillka Construction in the amount of, um, sorry, $21.45 per ton. Uh, last year, Hillka's construction, Hillka's, uh, contract was in the amount of $19.95 per ton delivered. I recommend the board make the award as requested.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Pete, your go. Oh, maybe the Select Person report?
I don't think we have enough time for the Fire Chief discussion.
No.
So let's go to the Student Select Person report. Not to put you on the spot.
No, you're good. I just need to find you first. Oh, goodness, there's so many papers.
That's why I keep mine on my little piece here.
I know, I might have to learn how to do that. If you want to go first. Um, so I kind of just grouped this into three categories. I grouped it into athletics, the arts, and school-wide initiatives. Uh, and so this is kind of everything that's going on and will be going on until kind of December-ish. So as for athletics, last Friday night was the last boys varsity football game at home. The season's varsity football game, the la, the season's last varsity football game will be on Thanksgiving Day against Tantascua, uh, so come support our Rams. Uh, winter sports registration will be open until November 25th, and there'll be a mandatory parade tonight for all prospective athletes on the 18th. As for the arts, last week, the marching band competed at their national competition in New Jersey at MetLife Stadium. Their color guard was one point away from receiving first place, so congratulations. Choir students have been rehearsing since September for their upcoming holiday spectacular in December. Tickets can be purchased at shepherdhillchoirs dot ticketlist dot com. Drama is currently in production of their newest play, Hamlet Noir. More ticket information and dates to come as we continue to support our drama department. As for school-wide initiatives, the National Honor Society would like to thank all community members who attended last month's Halloween event, Haunting on the Hill, for their generous donations of canned food items and cash. All donations collected will go toward our Thanksgiving Food Drive at the end of the month, which aims to feed over 50 families this year. We encourage students and families to continue to donate to this cause to feed our communities over the holiday. Um, and lastly, quarterworm report cards at Shepherd Hill were announced on Friday. So with this being the start of the second quarter, we hope that all students will continue to be diligent in their academics. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Andrew, you want to do your report?
Sure.
Jump to the Town Administrator's report?
All right, so first on the fire station, uh, fire substation work. So work continues to progress on the fire substation project. Uh, project is currently before the Planning Board, uh, with a planned review scheduled for November 20th. Uh, we continue to work with the school and the legislature to clear up the transfer of title on the property itself. Right now, the special legislation authorizing the sale of property to the town from the district is before the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. Uh, the committee is currently accepting written testimony on the bill from today until Friday, uh, the 15th. So if you guys want to write a letter, they are accepting written testimony now. Uh, we have received a motion of support from the Dudley Board of Selectmen as well in support of the legislative act. So currently, we're targeting mid-January to receive bids on the project and hope to be in a position to execute contracts at that time, assuming that this all continues to move in the right direction. On relative to the Turner Road Bridge, the town is currently working with McClure Engineering on a rehab to the Turner Road Bridge over the Little River as part of Mass DOT's municipal small bridge program. Um, McClure will be out conducting wetland flagging over the next few weeks as part of this assessment. So if you live in that area and you see some construction workers, that's what they're doing. For the election, I just want to extend my gratitude to the election workers who successfully conducted this year's presidential and state election. Uh, we had more than 8,000 Charlton residents turn out for the election through both early voting and the day of election, and really, you know, obviously, every election has its hiccups, but I think we limited it down to very few, and they did a great job conducting it.
Fantastic.
And, uh, just as a little community announcement, reminder of our red flag warning conditions that although we've seen some minor rainfall, um, over the last few nights, you know, central Massachusetts is currently in a state of severe drought. These drought conditions, coupled with the high wind and low humidity, have created a significant risk for brush fires in our area. Please be aware that at this time, there's no open burning allowed until January 15th, 2025, per the Department of Fire Services. Just wanted to make sure I got that out there.
And that, that includes open fire pits, anything?
Correct. That is correct. Do not engage in any activities that could contribute to the brush fire risk. Mark.
And Emma, not to put you on the spot, but do you have anything that you have for tonight, or? It's okay, because you were disappointed tonight. It's fine.
I have nothing to add. I'm just excited to be working with you all and get to learn from you all and for this great opportunity.
Thank you, welcome.
Let's see what you're saying, Meg.
All right, so I, we have two minutes until our first, uh.
By the time I get through the memo, we should be okay. All right, for 6:45, a tax classification hearing. Tonight, you're scheduled to hold the tax classification hearing at 6:45. The Board of Assessors have provided you with information to help you in making a decision as to whether to establish different tax rates or continue tax to tax all classes of property at the same rate by adopting a factor of one. There are four items that you will be asked to act on in order to set the tax rate. The tax rate, the small commercial exemption, the residential exemption, and opens, and an open space discount. The Board of Assessors, Prince Letha, Chief Assessor, will be, uh, present to review the material and answer any questions that you may have. The chairman should open the hearing by reading the notice of public hearing provided.
Town of Charlton, Notice of Public Hearing. The Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a tax classification public hearing in the Town Hall Meeting Room 1, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass, and also via Zoom with the address listed, on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, at 6:45 PM. The purpose of the hearing is to determine whether different or uniform rates of taxation will be applied to the various classifications of real, real property. The Board of Assessors will be available at the hearing to answer any questions that you may have. Input from the taxpayers will also be welcome at the hearing. All right, this is 6:45.
Good evening.
Hey, Captain.
Kathy Stanley, how are you tonight? Good, good. Um, so you've all had a chance to review the packet. I don't know if anybody had any specific questions they wanted to go over.
Mr. Chairman, through you? Kathy, for the folks at home, do you happen to have, and I should have asked you this before, and I apologize. Do you, I, I'm rounding a bit, for those in the audience at home, but we're, we're at 71% versus 29%, uh, residential versus other. Do you remember what we were at last year?
Yeah, we were around 25%.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, yeah.
Give or take, but we did go up a little bit, and I expect we'll go up again next year. And a lot of it this year was due to Amazon and the LNG facility. Um, but with the incoming personal property for Amazon, that'll hit, they didn't really have personal property this past January 1st. Um, they sure have a lot of it now, so when that comes on board, then that'll probably increase our personal property. So we're a little bit unique in that, you know, we have a pretty high CIP, we call it, so it's 2864, uh, combination of the commercial, industrial, and personal property. It's pretty high, but we don't have a lot of commercial. Our commercial is a very small piece of that pie. It really is our industrial and personal property base that's driving that.
So for those folks at home, really what that means is that by attracting the businesses in, even though they're not commercial, that your residential rate percentage, in a sense, that shift will, i- i- is continuing to go down, which is good. Because it was 70, because it was, it was, it would have been 7525 last year, right? So we're at 7129 this year.
Right, I mean, we'll have a single rate, so as long as you keep a single rate, it's not really impacted that way, but like if you shifted the rate, then it would impact it if you.
No, I'm thinking by more so that additional dollars are coming in.
From other sources than residential, yes.
Outside of actual homeowners is probably a better way to say it.
That's absolutely true, yes.
I just want to commend you once again. I think you've been doing a great job with these reports, and they're, make it very easy to read every year, and I, I have no questions or concerns.
Okay, excellent. Shall we move forward to vote, or?
Mr. Chair, are we going to take these in, uh, its entirety, or one through four separately, Mr. Chair?
We can go, uh, separately.
You go. Actually, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I could make a motion to stay with a single tax rate, I think.
I was going to close the public hearing first. Can I make a motion to close the public hearing? I'm sorry, that was, I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Motion and a second for everything.
No, just to close the public hearing so we can vote?
Just to close the hearing.
Unless there's anyone else who wants to talk, Mr. Chairman?
Close the hearing.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
So, all unanimous. Oh, I thought you'd make a motion.
So, well, we're going to talk about them separately, one through four. Um, I think I've always asked you, so that people watching can know that. We tend to stick with the single tax rate, but I always ask for each one of those four before we vote, so anyone watching can know your recommendation. So on the tax rate, do you, it was a recommendation?
It's a recommendation of the Board of Assessors to stay with a single rate, yes.
Uh, move it to stay with, okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes, to stay with a single rate.
So we have a motion for a single tax rate?
Uh, second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second for discussion.
Through the chair. Just a quick thing, Ed, again, much like Selectman Singer, since I've gotten on this board, I've always advocated and pushed for a, a single tax rate. Towns who have split historically have always tried to find a way to get them back, because by its very nature, you are discouraging businesses from coming in, because they'll be paying higher taxes. There's a reason why some of the larger industries, for, for good or bad, are coming into town right now. But again, it is helping our overall, uh, taxpayer relief for our, for our residents. Uh, to move against that, in my opinion, would be, for all intents and purposes, saying that we are against economic development, and I'm never going to pursue that path. So again, definitely all on board on a single tax rate.
Absolutely. Well said.
Any further discussion? No further, further discussion being heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, moving on to small commercial exemption.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yeah.
In addition to the recommendation on the small commercial exemption, is there a way of like, just like a real quick snippet, so people watching understand what that is?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. So it's small commercial exemption applies to owner-occupied businesses. They have to have 10 employees or less, and they have to be valued at less than a million dollars, and it's something we'd have to really start to analyze many months in advance of just tonight. So it's not recommended.
And it's mostly via, sorry, through the chair, and it, it, it's usually through those towns that, that have a split tax rate anyway.
Sometimes. There's, there's less than 20 communities in the entire state.
Yeah, out of the 351, there's very few. So, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, I would, uh, move to not implement a small commercial exemption.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Moving on to the residential exemption.
Mr. Chair, again, if I may, same thing.
Yeah, yeah. So the residential exemption is typical in communities in Boston and down the Cape. It's, it's non-owner-occupied buildings that you can shift the burden onto. Um, so a lot of your apartment buildings in the Boston area, down the Cape, where you have second homes, that sort of thing.
Is there a recommendation in these?
Recommendation to not adopt that. We do have second homes here on the lakes, but it's under 100. It wouldn't, you know.
Yeah, a lot of water, but still a minority. Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we do not implement a residential exemption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Open space discount.
Through the chair.
Yeah, so open space, the Board of Assessors recommends not to adopt that. We do have a quite high percentage of people that are in Chapter 61, 61A, and 61B, and that's the relief that they can seek to have a pretty good reduction in their tax base.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I all would move to also not implement an open space discount.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good job today. Killing the motions.
And of course, the next one is 61B.
There must have been 10 minutes. You, do you want, do you want to do the chief then?
You can try.
Your go.
Just talking about that.
What?
Except you, we're going to start it. Except you.
We can go back to the fire, move to, back to new business under Fire Chief.
All right. So discussion of Fire Chief process. With the notice of retirement from Fire Chief Knopf, the board should decide on the process for appointing a new Fire Chief. Some considerations in filling the vacancy. Does the board wish to establish a search and screening committee for this position? Does the board wish to conduct an assessment center to assist in screening candidates? And how many candidates does the board wish to consider for appointment? Attaches a current job description for the position that was last adopted in 2015. How would the board like to proceed in filling the pending vacancy?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I can make it as a motion or just my personal request. For me, I'd like to keep it in-house, maybe have a Plan A and a Plan B. But I'd like us to start the process, if the board agrees, with an in-house search, unless there's no applicants or interest in house, or no one that rises to the top. That Plan B could be to then go outside if we have an unsatisfactory internal process. But I'd like to, we always talk about how much we believe in our departments, police and fire, our first responders. And I still believe that, and I believe we have a lot of qualified members of these departments, so I would like to keep it in-house. I'd like the CS post for those interested, and however you all think the way to word it, but I'd like the CS post for the opportunity so interested candidates can apply, and then have them send in the applications, whether it's, uh, two or the three members with the Andrew or committee, but someone to then look over the, uh, applicant's resumes and letter, whatever, cover letter, to decide who we may want to interview, and then actually have them come to interview. Mark, this is my thought.
Yeah, so I, I concur with your thought process. I would, I would echo your sentiments, but I would, uh, open it for internal candidates for a period of seven days and ask for, you know, a letter resume, uh, letter of intent, a resume, and then we can develop a series of questions that they have, submit a written response for that we can review too.
You think seven days is long enough?
For internal applicants?
For internal, yeah.
I, I do, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I don't have any.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with the internal part.
I mean, we can go to 10 days, I bet I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like the idea of having a Plan B just in case, but generally, yeah, I think if we want to start with internal, I think that's a nice.
So you're saying, so you're saying seven days for the internal, then after seven days, we open it up for the?
Well, no, so the way it would work is, we're going to look internal. So if we take the three pieces of the puzzle so far, it would be internal posting for seven days. We would only be then going to an external search if we either don't get any internal applicants, or we go through the internal process and it turns out that there's just no one that really rose to the top.
Yeah, that we're just not comfortable with, or a majority.
Correct. Then we'd be able to go outside. So we're being also very upfront with the department now, saying we're going to look inside, but this is the.
But no promises.
Plan B option.
No, I'm fine with that.
And, and, um, what Mr. Lance said, said as far as his process for the applications, developing the questions to submit. So I would make that as a, I can make it as a motion then.
Could I just ask you, hold off on the motion, do we have a little more discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, not, not even on that piece for me. I'm fine with that. I was thinking about the rest of Andrew's questions that he posed and see what the chief thinks and others, for example, because, I mean, again, I don't know how this board feels, but again, I, I'm fine with David's, Ben Pete's proposal saying, start with internal and then see what happens. I think the next question that Andrew posed, and I think it's a good one, is do we use an assessment center or not? Uh, do we find value in it? Uh, and, you know, take it from there, and again, I'd like to hear from, or just whatever. I mean, I, I can go either way on it, let's put it that way. I'm not tied to it.
I'm not in favor of an assessment.
I want to, can, can we hear from Chief? What do you think?
Sure, so, um, I, I would just say that, you know, I have my opinion. I don't, I don't necessarily agree with, uh, Mr. Singer's take, but again, this is just my opinion. I, I look at it, and even though I've given and I've provided Andrew with a letter of recommendation for Deputy Chief Corio, I believe that the, the town does itself a disservice if it doesn't spread the search far and wide. Um, if he is truly the best candidate that I think he will be, he will rise to the top. That doesn't mean you shouldn't do your due diligence in looking for qualified candidates. And that doesn't mean they have to be internal or external.
That's okay.
And I would also agree, I would also reconsider the, uh, assessment center in that if, if you're looking for transparency, you want a independent third party to look at this process, but because it is a process that does shape the future of the Fire Department um, for the next decade and possibly more. And I think the, the transparency behind a third-party review, an assessment center, an interview process, and whatever the third stage is within that, gives you a more well-rounded look at the candidates instead of just a board having interview questions. That's just the way I feel. Um, and I've always stated that to Andrew, and I stated it to him day one when he walked in the door. My job is to get you ready for the job, but understand that my feelings on the position is, is that the town would do themselves a disservice if they didn't look at it globally.
What's the disadvantage about using a assessment center? Again, this is just conversation.
There's a subjective and objective testing, and the subjective can be swayed to a different degree, a different way.
But it'll be only a tool, not a decision, right?
And there's a cost associated to the town with the assessment.
Correct. Assessment centers usually run, I think, 10, 15,000, I think. Estimate, could be a little lower, a little higher, I think that's what we've experienced in the past for cost for assessment centers.
Depends on usually how many candidates you're considering. If it was a smaller pool, it could be less.
Yeah, and so like my, my perspective on this is, and in response to the chief's feelings, is that if we wind up going to Plan B and we went outside, I'd be more inclined to use the assessment center for this process. For me, and there are reasons, again, that I won't get into, you know, I just don't think it's the, the proper place or time to talk about assessment centers, pros and cons, or, or things that have happened in the past, but like any process. But like any process, there are pros and cons. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I'll simply say that for this process, I'm, I'm confident in this board and Andrew in coming to a decision. And if we don't find someone internal, and we open it to the outside, which are candidates that no one knows, then I think it might benefit us to have outsiders come in as well. But when we're dealing with a department where everyone in this table is very familiar with the department, I think that we're, we're capable of doing that.
When we think, I, I, just, just one quick thing. I don't know if it's worth talking around the job description requirements first. Because I think the deputy chief has done a great job, but I wouldn't necessarily consider him the de facto heir apparent at this point, just because of, of, of tenure. I think when Dan, Chief Dowd got bumped up, he had been in this role a lot longer, and I was very comfortable saying that he was, yeah, that was very logical. But I am slightly concerned, and I, the chief, I think brings up a good point of, depending upon our requirements, we might only have one or two people. Again, hypothetically, depending upon what we set for those requirements, willing or able to apply. And is that like enough of a fishing net to make sure that we get somebody who is going to influence the department for the next X number of years? So I think we might want to dive into that a little bit as well, of what are our minimum requirements for even being considered for the position? Because what if it always, what, like, what if it's just one person? Like, depending upon what we choose, then it's like, okay, well.
Well, then we, then we go external. If we, if we're not satisfied with the internal candidates, we make the decision to go external and expand our search.
Would we want to even go down, again, this is just for discussion. I said, would we even want to go down the path if, again, if only like two people, two, applied? I mean, is that enough to make an informed decision? And it might be. I, I really don't know. This is one of those, I can honestly, I have not made up my mind on this one. This is a, I think we should talk it through and discuss it. That's why, when you were saying before, like, you know, like, did we do this in five minutes? I'm like, I don't think so.
I don't think you're at a point where any of us can make up our mind. We're just talking about, for a final decision, we're just talking about internal or external. I've always been a proponent of hiring internally if we have the candidates to do it.
But what if our requirements only bring in two applicants? Would you feel comfortable potentially making a decision just between two applicants?
Dan Dowd's, Dan Dowd, stand up. Let's give, let's give him a, no, I'm kidding. No, we've, we've done, and we've, since I've been here, we've done two internal promotions. Highway and Dan. And they both worked out extremely well. They know the town. They, there's a lot of reasons for it.
I, I, I think we all here agree that we all about, you know, promoting and giving opportunities to the town people, right, to the ones that are internally already involved. But I go with Bill and with the chief, two people, I don't know if I will comfortable with that number.
And there may be more. I mean, that's the thing. I don't know. I mean, I, I would just like enough of a possible population.
So, if I may, again, it's just, so, we have had promotions in town using both ways, with and without assessment center. Right? And in the end, neither route was a disaster, right? We went through processes with and without, and we got our chiefs. And also, we've had different promotional processes where you've had, even the last police promotions, it's like, sometimes we will get a lot of candidates and sometimes we won't get a lot of candidates. I think that we don't know until we post if we're gonna get no candidates internally, one candidate, two, three, we don't know. But I go back to the same thing that we just went through with the police department. Not that I want to rehash what we went through with the police department, but I said the same thing then. And not that it was anything against the external candidate, but I, I still maintain the same thing I said during the police process. I believe in this, in the, in the people we have, and I believe that they're fully capable. And I believe that if we're not going to give them the consideration that we're gonna look to them first, then I think it sends a very negative message. And that may not be the same message that everyone would feel, chiefs or former chiefs or current chiefs or future chiefs. However, to me, and from my experience in, in talking to firefighters and police officers and everyone else throughout town over the years. There is still a common feeling that if you truly believe in us, meaning them, then why would we not give them these opportunities? And if we're not gonna give them these opportunities, then why would they stay here? And I know there are arguments to, for and against why people would look for other police and fire departments to leave if we don't do things a certain way. And it's always worst-case scenarios that never come to pass. And I, that's why I think it is important that we do focus on those who give themselves to Charlton. If they rise to the occasion and meet the criteria, and they demonstrate the ability to do the job, that they should be given this opportunity before going outside.
And just to comment on, on Bill about the job description, I, I've scrubbed through it, top page to page. And I think it's pretty open that it would attract more candidates than if we reviewed it and raised the criteria. So I think if we raise the criteria, then we're only gonna single out.
Oh, I agree with you a hundred percent, yeah.
I think we're at a level where it would attract the most internal candidates at this point, and then we can make a decision from there with the job description that's written.
I would just say personally, again, internally, I'm fine, I shouldn't say I'm fine. I'm not a hundred percent on board, but I think it's, I think it's okay to proceed with it. But if we don't get three qualified candidates coming in, I'm gonna have a real hard time making an informed decision for the, for the benefit of the town. So, I mean, we can definitely try this path with the existing job description that's, that's out there, Andrew, that you put, that you put in the packet. And we can have a more conversation about it. But again, I am, just to be candid, I'm a little hesitant if we have such a small population to, to choose from. That, that's not to say we will. So I, I may be putting the cart before the horse.
And so, just exploring Bill's point and position. Let's say, for example, we post internal, and we didn't get a satisfactory number of applicants. Do we have to come back? All right, let me, let me rephrase. If you're gonna open it to external candidates, let's say you, you want, pick a number. You want four and you have three. Do you open it externally to offer one external application, or once you open it externally, now you gotta?
I'd open up to everybody at that point.
So, that's why I was suggesting a time limit on that. So if we say if we don't have three applicants within seven days and it automatically opens, goes to open. I mean, that, that way we're not delaying, waiting for another meeting.
If we get a compromise on that, I'm fine with it. Again, I, I may be, yeah, I may be on the losing side of that vote anyway, but regardless, I mean, I'm okay, obviously, we, we, we hear from others, like, yeah. But I'm not putting it like a hands fist table objection on it.
Hi, for those of you guys that don't know me, I'm Captain Travis McDonald. I work for the Charlton Fire Department. I'm also the permanent firefighters union president. I just want to take the time to thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to echo the chief's sentiments on transparency in this process. And I'm speaking on behalf of most of my membership here. When I say that, I truly believe that an assessment center is the correct avenue to go, that leaves the most transparency in the process. It's very common across the Commonwealth. It's probably the most common way to appoint deputy chief and fire chief positions. And it's actually starting to trickle down into the mid-level management as well. As far as the internal versus external debate, I want to say that I appreciate all of the, said, and sent up and echoed about giving the opportunity to our internal people. But our feeling is our internal people are gonna rise to the top anyways. The best, the largest amount of candidates, the best amount of candidates that you have is what we are looking for. We want it opened up to everybody that wants to put in for it, and we truly believe that our internal candidates will prevail. There is a succession plan in place, and we're hoping that is followed. You know, we truly do back Deputy Chief Corio. He's done a tremendous job since he came, and he's worked very well with the union. We're very, very happy to have him with our department. And our hope is that through a competitive process that is transparent, we'll get a good candidate that is an internal candidate. Whether that be the deputy chief or somebody else who does apply for it from internal. But our feeling is that it should be going out as to everybody. It shouldn't just be posted internally.
Thanks, Cap.
Thank you.
Pete, can I ask another question? This might be to Andrew and the chief for that matter. If we did go in assessment center, and it sounds like that may not be the prevailing view, but if we did, is that the final criteria or is it a component of the final? Meaning, if, if the person who scored first, is that a, yeah, just a component. So it's X percent variable that we can just take into consideration, as opposed to like civil service where it's like, nope, you're the highest, like, you have to get it type of thing.
So then that's really discounting their thought of being transparent with the assessment center, because then there's gonna be a question, if the top scorer doesn't get the position, why they didn't get the position. So, I mean, once again, I'll, I'll, I am against the assessment center.
I, I agree with.
I was just gonna add, there are a lot of reasons why I'm not in favor of an assessment center. One, I think it would be money poorly spent at this point. I've seen good assessment centers and I've seen bad assessment centers, and I'll leave it at that. I think we just are also beginning to now hear some conflicting statements. I appreciate the input, but it's a board decision. I think it's difficult to sit here, and while I certainly respect the opinion of the union representative. To see her and talk about bringing in everyone because we'll rise to the top, while at the same time saying, in transparency, while at the same time saying there's a succession plan in place. That's a conflicting statement. If there was a succession, a succession plan in place, we wouldn't be going through this process. Because the next chief would already be being appointed because of the succession plan. Personally, I, I'm just saying, and I appreciate you having an opinion. This is mine. And my opinion is the authority for that decision lies with this board and nobody else. The succession plan will be determined by the five members of this board. Five, you know, four to one, three to two, whatever. But it will be this board. And to say there's already succession plans in place, I think is, is personally a bad place, a bad route to go. Because this board has not met, and this is the board that's the appointing authority. And that's my opinion.
Just for clarification, when I say succession plan, I mean as far as the overall movement of the fire department. As far, as far as our twenty-year plan, our ten-year plan, and again, I'm, I understand the decision lies with the board. I'm just echoing what my members bring to me. And I am their voice.
And I appreciate that. And I will point out that there was a letter put out that included a recommendation of the next person who should be promoted. And I think that was also bad form and puts the whole process.
Let me, let me interject and say there's a command structure in place. And I think that's a fair statement.
Yes.
May I ask what the letter you referencing is?
It's a public letter. I believe it was the chief's own retirement letter where he mentions the successor that he feels is ready and should be taking on this.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't from, from myself, because there wasn't any, any letter that I knew about, so I just want to make sure it wasn't a, a union, a union matter.
Then the process means we should not be out there throwing around this person's gonna be the, the next, or I think this person should be, the board is the one making this appointment. The board has not had these conversations yet.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would, I'm curious how you'd like to proceed, in meaning, do you want to take these recommendations one at a time? Because it really sounds like to me there's three things. You, you start with it, you start with internal, or you open it up to everybody. Part two is do we want an assessment center? And then part three, do we all agree that the recommended minimum qualifications that, that are listed in our packets would be the ones that we want to go for? Or do we, or do we change those? So, Mr. Chairman, I obviously defer to you to see how you like to proceed.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make a motion to Bill's, your three points. I would make a motion to start internally, and if we do not get qualified candidates, that then we open it to the outside, and that B.
With the seven days.
The, the assessment center aspect.
B, that we go, I would still, I'm not in favor of spending the money on the assessment center. So I would, I would go with the internal candidates with plan B to go outside if we don't get qualified candidates internally. That we go with the recommendation of the posting for seven days, the submission of the application, resumes, cover letters. And then we formulate the questions and interview process that they'll go through. And the last part, oh, to not make changes, because to Bill's point, you know, the more you tighten it up, the more you potentially limit the candidate pool.
So, just for clarification, we're making, your motion is to post internally for seven days. If we don't get adequate enough candidates, we'll go externally, no assessment center, and no changes to the current job description.
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion.
I'll second for discussion.
So we have a motion and a second.
What's the minimum number to consider being an aggregate?
Oh, I don't even know yet. I would say, I mean, I would, I mean, personally, I would feel uncomfortable with less than three, but that's just me. I mean, the rest of the board might feel differently.
I'm not even about the number, about the number and the qualifications themselves, you know? Not just the number, could be two, but very solid ones.
We're not changing any of the qualifications.
The qualifications are the minimum, the minimum threshold. So anything above that would be a bonus for either candidate if they have higher degrees, higher this.
And for those wondering, it's a bachelor's degree, master's degree, and above preferred in fire ed services related or administrative field, a minimum of ten years of experience in an organized fire department. And at least seven years of full-time experience in a supervisory capacity. The special requirements of the Mass Fire Academy Career Recruit Training Program or similar. Pro-board firefighter one, firefighter two certifications, valid class D motor vehicle license, current mass EMT certification or higher. And pro-board hazardous materials operations level certification, and then I have no idea what this means, but NIMS seven hundred, eight hundred, ICS one hundred, two hundred, three hundred.
And Bill has to finish that up with, what's behind three or what's in the box? Just how you read it.
I know my limits, let's put it that way. So, anyway, I seconded for, for, at least for, for discussion, so.
So any discussion?
I would agree with all of it, except I think we should use the assessment center. So if I vote no, that's the only reason why.
And I'm with Bill on this one. That's why I was asking if we, if we're going to go with the whole three at the same time, or we, you know?
This motion, we have a motion and a second on the table. We can vote it out and see what goes, and if it doesn't, we can go for another.
Yeah. I would, Ms. Jim, and I would, I would recommend go, go in that direction, because it may be all for naught. I don't think we're gonna change each other's minds at this point.
Any further discussion on David's motion?
On David's motion is without the assessment.
Yes.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, three ayes, all opposed?
No.
No.
Two oppose.
Right.
Passes.
So, Mr. Chair, is it, you'll work with Andrew, you can get some feedback from questions from the chief. We can all submit questions, or how, how are we gonna, Andrew will post for seven days. Internally first, to see if we can get enough qualified candidates.
So I guess my question is what's, if, what is the minimum threshold of, if we don't hit that number, do we automatically go out? Is it three?
Honestly, I'd almost rather discuss that at, at the next meeting, like, depending upon what we get back in. I mean, my, I mean, my personal threshold is, is, is three qualified.
So basically, if we get one, we're going out anyway. If we get twenty, nobody cares, nobody's worried about it.
I would not like, if we get this posted, I would not like to delay the external posting.
Okay.
So I would, you know, I'd rather set a number, and if we don't meet the threshold, doesn't mean.
Yeah, I'm fine with three. But I, but if the other board, if, if other board members feel better with two, I mean, I get it. But I would feel just personally better with three.
Do we want a motion is?
I, I would, I'm okay with two. It's, if, if it's internal.
If somebody makes a motion.
I'm okay with two, yeah.
So we have a motion for two. Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, really, I just want to move it on to a vote.
Motion, no further discussion. All in favor for a minute, minimum, oh?
No, I'm just thinking. I need a minute.
Can I interject here? So you're either choosing this or that?
Oh, so I'm trying to find a way, because I don't want, I want to make sure that we're not limiting, you know, I want everyone to stand, if twenty people apply, that's the best case scenario. So my only concern is we're not setting a, a number that, this is what we want, we're gonna move. We're setting a number saying it has to be at minimum this.
Right.
More is better.
At least three qualified candidates.
Right. So the motion is for two. So if we don't, only got one applicant, that doesn't automatically make them fire chief. So we need at least two applicants to make a decision. If we don't choose from those applicants, then we go open.
Chief, how many people do we have on officers in the department?
There are five captains and a deputy chief.
So six people.
I mean, if we go to bid for, for like three, I'm, I'm having a hard time saying that, that, that we can choose a chief for less than that. That, that's my only thing for three.
I just have one more point to make it possible. So under the current job description that was just read, I do want to clarify that two, possibly three people are the only, would be the only internal candidates that would be qualified for that position. Depending on whatever the definition of supervisory experience would be. We have somebody who might be on the fence, depending on what the, what the definition, that's gonna be used by the board.
And that's based on the current description.
That's the current description.
So if we actually did mess with it, it would be even lower.
Yes.
Unless you lowered it.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not open to lowering.
No, no, I'm with you. So again, it's a, it's a majority of the board decision.
Yep, so.
Oh, I think this, it was Steve's motion for two.
So are we gonna?
So my motion was for two, for a minimum of two.
Is there a way to?
Well, no, yes, I'm sorry, correct you.
But, but two, but two within seven days, can they get all that together? And, and the timings, when will we meet again by the time we get that?
Well, that's what I'm saying. This is internal. The notice of resignation, or notice of retirement has been posted, so if people are thinking about it, then they're actively preparing. So I think seven days is, I mean, we can do ten.
No, you're right. It's already, yeah, yeah.
Can, so if I, I'm not opposed, I'm just saying, is there a way then to? Can, so, if I, I'm not opposed, I'm just saying, is there a way then to combine, again, three views? Where if we're gonna, if we have the motion and a second to go two, we don't wanna have to come back. If we're not getting two, or we don't get qualified, can we include in that motion that he's gonna automatically post?
To external?
Right, and not wait for us to have to come back and go through this again?
I'd be fine with that as a second, I mean, if you want, I mean, depends on you.
Include that. If we don't get what we were looking for from quantity and quality, that we don't have to come back. Part of the motion, he amended, if you'll amend it as well, that Andrew has the authority to just go outside.
I wanna amend that. I don't, why don't we wait and see what happens? We have time here.
Alright, well, then, let's, well, then, Mr. Chairman, I would, I'd like to, to at least mo- move that motion.
Okay.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed.
To move the motion?
To move the motion, so now when you.
Oh, no, I, no, I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were calling for the, for the motion.
Alright, so I'm taking a vote on the motion, vote on, uh, Selectman Cronus's motion.
Oh, can you state that motion clearly?
The minimum of two. And within seven days.
Okay.
So, the motion is, motion and second is two applicants within seven days. We have a motion, all in favor? Aye.
No, I don't.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Uh, two no, three aye.
Okay. Democracy in action.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Uh, related then, since, and nobody might second this, but we couldn't get it in that motion. I'd like to motion to authorize Andrew to automatically post for external applicants if we do not receive qualified or internal applications. If we don't meet the minimums and, or they're just not qualified, that he does not have to come back to us, and we can just post for external candidates. That would be my motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Alright, motion and second.
I think he needs to come back to us.
It's a backup plan.
Alright, but then, but that's, but we have, he has time to come back to us, though. Rather than just, I, I, I don't wanna see it automatic. I mean, are we gonna see everything before?
Yes.
It goes automatic.
Well, if you don't get two, 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 two applicants, that would actually defeat your motion.
Or you get two applicants, and they're not qualified, or they don't meet the job description.
Correct.
We don't have to wait two weeks, Andrew can just post for external candidates to apply.
So, if only one person who is qualified gets it through with, 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 with the criteria, all this is saying is that we would automatically go external.
And just to clarify, we're not using assessment for neither external.
Correct, but what we're doing is, we are giving the internal, which, again, I can't stress enough, I've said it for twenty years, priority. And we believe in you, but if we don't get them, then I don't wanna have to wait two weeks, and she's only here for five. We're gonna have, come back in two, by the time we then meet for that, and then get to post external, we're gonna be real close to him leaving and potentially not having him here to work with someone overlapping. I'd, I mean, I'd rather not have him wait if we don't have to. And we're not even going that route unless this doesn't work out.
So, Mr. Chairman, I believe the motion is that if there's, if there are two qualified people, we're fine. If not, it will, it would, it would automatically go external.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That makes sense.
Opposed.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Two oppose.
Oh, we do, because not, not for two.
No, no.
Oh.
Yeah.
Aye, okay.
No, it's okay.
Again, it's, I didn't change.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Hey.
Anything else under the fire chief position that we need to discuss?
Democracy in action.
Alright, going back to our public here.
Thanks, chief. Yeah, thanks, Cap. Ooh, the sixty-one B?
Alright, seven o'clock, request remove sixty-one B City Depot Road. Attaches are requests from Attorney Jeff Chase on behalf of Franklin D Hammond to remove from chapter sixty-one B parcel seventeen dash B dash thirteen point five as shown on assessor's map. Strip of land approximately thirty thousand three hundred forty-eight square feet. The planning board, Board of Assessors, Conservation Commission, and Water Sewer Commission have all reviewed the request and have no objection to the town of Charlton choosing not to exercise their right of first refusal for this request. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached public hearing notice, and recommend the board approve the request.
Alright, public hearing notice, please be advised, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. Town of Charlton, Town Hall, Selectman Meeting Room, Meeting Room One, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. And off the Zoom link is listed with the passcode. Uh, to act on request of Attorney Jeff Cassay, on behalf of Franklin D Hammond, to remove the chapter sixty-one B parcel seventeen B thirteen point five as shown on assessor's map strip of land approximately thirty thousand three hundred and forty-eight square feet. Anybody interested should appear at this date and time specified, or submit their concerns in writing.
Yes, good evening, Board of Selectmen. I'm Jeffrey Chase from Sturbridge, representing Franklin Hammond, petitioner. He's just looking to sell, as you stated, about thirty, uh, thirty thousand three hundred square feet of land off Center Depot Road. It's been taxed under chapter sixty-one B for a number of years. He has it on butter that's interested in increasing his yard space, so he made an offer to purchase it for thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that's the reason we're before you, asking you to decline the right of first refusal to purchase the land.
Mr. Chairman, I have no issues, and I, I don't feel like anyone else in the public does, if I don't, shut her down.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this matter?
Motion, motion to close the public hearing?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we decline our right of first refusal to purchase the property.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Chase.
Thank you very much.
That'll be good one, sorry to relate. Ah, poll hearings.
Seven, ten poll healing, for, hearing for Lelandville Road. Attached will find a request from Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, requesting permission to install seven S, uh, SO poles on Lelandville Road to service three residential homes. The attached is a notice that was sent to the butters. This request has been forwarded to, and approved by both the police chief and DBW superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent through butters, and I'd recommend the board approve the request.
Public hearing notice, the Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four at seven ten P M. In Meeting Room One, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass, zero one five zero seven. Zoom address is listed with passcode and phone call-in. To act on the request of the Mass Electric Company, DBA National Grid, seeking permission to locate poles, wireless fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Leland, Lelandville Road, National Grid, to install seven so-owned poles on Lelandville Road beginning at point approximately eight hundred and thirteen feet north of the center line of the intersection of Potter Village Road and Lelandville Road, and continuous approximately nine hundred and sixty-one feet in a northwest direction. National Grid will be installing seven so-owned poles in public ways to service three residential homes. Pole locations will be petitioned between, are installed across three work requests. Work request three zero nine nine six eight zero four, three zero nine nine six eight one five, and three zero nine nine six eight one six, Charlton, Mass. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified, or submit concerns in writing. Is anybody here for discussion? Anybody, um?
Anybody on from National Grid?
Hi. Hello.
Are you from National Grid?
Yes.
Thank you for coming in person, it's always nice.
Andrew, did we receive any, uh, concerns in writing?
I did not receive any concerns in writing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the, uh, poll petition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming in. Hopefully, they, they pay for gas mileage.
Guess I'll get started on the memo. I'll get started on the memo while, uh, he excused himself. Alright, so next we have a discussion slated for seven fifteen to discuss the town clerk position uh, going from an elected position to an appointed position. The government study review committee provided a report to the board upon completion of their review of the two thousand sixteen government study report, white paper report. One of the recommendations is to make the town clerk's position an appointed one. With the technicalities of the position and the requirements to meet state law, they agreed that there needs to be a professional manager in this position. This bylaw change would be in accordance with Mass General Law, Part One, Title Seven, Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighteen. This would apply to all other bylaw changes with, which involve elected and appointed changes. Attorney Henigan is here this evening and has provided some guidance as well as, uh, as well of some, of the process that the board should decide, move forward with the recommendation of the government study committee. We invited the government study committee, as well as, uh, Town Clerk Karen McCroy, to participate in your discussion.
Happy birthday, Andy.
Oh, thank you very much. You would never have known, right?
Okay, I'm Joe Hadler, Chairman of the, uh, Government Study Committee. This is Jerry Dobell, who is, um, it's Vice, Vice Chair. And, um, this is Karen McCroy. She is the town clerk. And, um, we, we, we're here to support her in, in, in this effort, since she was asked to speak. And, um, I'm, I'm gonna, Karen, you wanna speak first? Okay. And she'll tell you all about her job and what she does.
Um, well, I'll just read what I have, 'cause, you know, me, and I'm nervous, so. And then if you have any questions about the job, which I think we've discussed before. Um, I just believe that the position of the town clerk should be appointed. It is the only full-time department head position that has to be elected to their position. Fifteen years ago, the treasurer and collector were separate positions, and they were also elected. And that has changed, so the town clerk is the only one left. Um, I can't imagine it, I can't imagine it being acceptable that any other department head can have the position without being interviewed to be sure they have the proper experience and qualifications. Why should the town clerk be any different? It is a very important position and entails so much more than just handing out a dog license. I believe most voters understand this, especially after the last four years of elections. We have a town clerk Google group, and many emails from new town clerks, which there are about a hundred and twenty after the previous election, are asking for answers to very basic questions during this important election year, just make us cringe. All we can think of, think of to ourselves is, oh, boy, that poor person. It's stressful enough, I can't imagine running an election with no experience. An elected position brings fear of losing your job every three years. This may deter someone really good from running, as there is a risk of them not being reelected. I know that town administrations want to attract people to municipal positions and, and show them that there is room for growth. If the assistant town clerk is not from the town, there is no room for advancement as they cannot run for the town clerk when the position is open. This would cause assistants to leave position, the position, and move on to their own town as a town clerk. You could possibly have the position of an assistant and a town clerk both being new in their positions at the same time. This would not be an ideal situation in an election year. By having someone in the position of town clerk with no experience, it increases the risk to the town, both legally and financially, if errors are made. I would recommend giving the opportunity to the voters to be able to make the decision to what is best for the town of Charlton for changing the position from appointed, um, or keeping it as elected, as they so choose.
Just, I'd like to say, as part of the government study committee, we, we studied, uh, everything we had on that. And, uh, the thing that came up to me is the liability that the town has if she puts out, the town clerk puts out incorrect information. I've worked with her in the office when we were doing some of the election work, and out at the, uh, the polls. And the questions that come up, and some of the technicalities that come up can be extreme. And I know even Karen has called the state to get information that so, s- the laws now are so technical and so difficult to work with, that you need somebody experienced, and I can't imagine somebody just deciding. For example, if I decided to run for town clerk and won, I don't know what the heck I'd do. It's, it's extremely difficult, and, uh, I'm worried about the legal li- liabilities to the town, is my main point, so. And, and another thing with this, the accountability that the, um, the town has with a, with a certified town clerk. I think it's, um, it's, it's time to, to get into the professional era and have a town clerk that knows and continues to, uh, to grow in the, in the job. Not only, not, but not only that, knows the laws, knows how to keep records, uh, keep, keep the, uh, voting. Besides the voting records, it's the town, uh, town changes and bylaws and a lot of other materials that she has to be in, in charge of. So, that's my statement.
I, I'd just wanna open by saying, I, I thank you for all your work on this, and I thank Karen for the work she, she does. Uh, we may have differing opinions on this. Um, basically, you know, what I'm hearing is, you know, you're saying for appointment, that this board would know better than the general public on the, and the person to put into that. And I fundamentally disagree with that. I think the public should be the one making the decisions, who we want in the positions. But that's just me, I'm happy, you know, to hear from the other board members.
Well, alright, no.
If I could say something about that, the public usually votes in somebody they like. And they could like, you know, John Doe. And John Doe could be a guy who comes out of the byroom every night. The, the, my big fear is that, you know, someday, they could elect somebody in some position that has no ability to do the job. That, that, and that's why we're, we're looking for somebody who's professional.
And, and, and I, I, I hear you, and I echo that, but that could happen for any, you could elect somebody for the Board of Selectmen that has no responsibility for that position. It's a, it's a liability out there with democracy and open elections, it's the popular vote.
Yes, but the town clerk is, is one, and she's solely responsible for what goes on the office. Your five of you, plus two, who, um, share the responsibility.
And to the chair, so, to your own point, though. There's liability whether the clerk is appointed or elected. The liability doesn't go away. I personally witnessed mistakes made in the clerk's office in this town and other towns. So, whether we elect or appoint, isn't it guaranteed that mistakes won't happen? I don't care who you put in there. Unless they're not human, humans are fallible, mistakes are made by everyone and every voter. For me, I'm not gonna make my decision based upon a worst-case scenario. I will consider a worst-case scenario, but I'm not gonna make my decision based on a worst-case scenario.
And what I can point out on, on that is that they're trying to minimize.
Correct.
The, uh, the possible errors.
Correct, and, and part of that is, and why I agree with, uh, Mr. Wannasat, though, is that not every vote is unanimous, whether it's to make other positions from elected to appointed or, or not. Right? We all have our different opinions. There, that's why there are five members, only three have to agree to prevent anything that happens. But I do agree with Pete in that the people, I think, in Charlton know who and what they want and how they want. Now, they're gonna go to the ballot box no matter what. So, if this fails today, right, they're gonna go to the ballot box to elect the next clerk. If it passes today, they still have to go to the ballot box to decide if they wanna do this. So, it goes to the, it has to go to the ballot box either way. And again, we're only talking about opinions, right? So, this, there are new town clerks elected every year across the Commonwealth. They are provided training by the state because it is a very common occurrence. Now, nothing I'm saying in any way diminishes the role, it's just pointing out a reality, that is the reality. And you can look at it, and I, I say there are pros to keeping it elected, and there are pros to making it appointed. Right? If you keep it elected, like any role, it could be a popularity contest. Fortunately, in my case, we know everyone hates me, but I still won anyway.
I don't know how that happens.
But the, but the point is, right, that if you leave it elected, it could be a popularity contest. If it goes appointed, now it becomes political divinity, and political appointments, which I've also watched happen. So, I'm just saying, there are pros and cons to either approach. So I'm just saying, there are pros and cons to either approach.
And opposed to that, I would like to say, anything is political because you're dealing with politics, whether it be a town administrator or fire chief or whatever.
So I'll clarify. What I mean by, so I'll clarify. What I mean by political is instead of the popularity contest, it's someone's friend, right? Or someone who wants to make sure this person gets the appointment, which I have witnessed multiple times, whether it's, I won't even go into that because I don't think I can legally. There are ways to ensure a candidate comes out on top, and I'll leave it at that. So if you go internal, I'm just saying, there are ways to play that system as well. So there are pros and cons to either approach.
And, and I just wanted to elaborate on my perspective. I'm a veteran, 26 years Army, retired, multiple combat tours. I value my ability to vote and I like to exercise that and I do my due diligence. So that's where I'm coming from and that's my perspective and that's why I feel so strongly about this and that's, you know, just where I am with this.
Could I have a shot at this?
Sure.
So there were three reasons I think this needs to be considered as an appointed position. Number one is we're no longer in, in, in an election day. We are in election season and the rules have changed. You've seen it. So the rules have changed and it could be really embarrassing and to the town if things didn't go well. What, what happened six years ago in, in the voting cycle is no longer the case now. She has to carry through 14 days of pre-voting, walk-in, voting, all that kind of stuff. And you just want to put that onto the, onto the, to anybody that could just, under a popularity contest that could, that could win.
Well, we have that now and it's, and it's going quite well. I mean, Karen's doing a wonderful job at being elected.
But, so then, the reason number two is the government study committee spends a year. Ever gone to any of their meetings, any of you?
No.
No.
No? I have. They know more about this town than we do historically. David, even you, they do.
That's why I'm not.
No, I, you'll, you'll never admit that, but they do.
Well, I was going to say, Mr. Corona.
Can we stay on point?
I'm not going to argue that point with you. I would never make such a claim. And unlike you, I'm actually going to stick to the topic at hand.
The third.
Because if you want to start that debate, I'm happy to have it with you.
Can we have that debate later?
Televised.
Sorry. So they get together once a month. You've never been there. No, you can laugh all you want. I'm still talking.
I'm not laughing.
They get together once a month and they come up with different ideas. And the fact that, and the fact that we ignored it for almost a year, now they're here in front of us again. I admire them for their dedication. That's point number two. Point number three, what do we do? She's, your, your argument about you don't want to take the vote away from the people. That's the argument. That's your basic argument.
It's not my argument, it's my position. I'm fine that this goes to town meeting, but, you know, you're rambling right now, you're not making too much sense, and I'm about to suspend this, make a motion to suspend this meeting. So make your point and finish up.
So thank you for clarifying that. Your, so your argument, your, your debate against it is to, you want, you want the ability of the voters to decide at a ballot who, who, who becomes town clerk? The will of the voters. But what you're, but what you're, why don't you just put the will of the voters onto a town meeting to take, take the, your, to take that away? Town meeting, I don't think town meetings going to care whether or not the town clerk is elected or appointed.
That's not your place to say.
No, town, it's not yours either. It's town meetings.
And I said I was fine with it going to town meeting for the vote. I'm just saying my purpose, my position. I can have a position but also be okay with it going to town meeting. And I can cut up and make public comment at a town meeting as well.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just very briefly, I think the idea of an elected town clerk is a wonderful anachronism. I can't imagine us hiring a finance director by having an elected position. I would not feel comfortable in the least bit, like if, I mean, unless it was somehow Ashley, Ashley got, got elected. But the idea of someone maybe not necessarily being qualified to run finances in the books, I don't see how that's very much different than, than, than a town clerk's position. That being said, I am fully in favor of pushing this forward and letting the voters decide. But I'd like to ask after, select woman Zarowski has a chance to speak, or our two new colleagues as well, because my understanding around the process, having read the packet, was that it's not just a town meeting vote, there's also a ballot vote that has to occur via special town meeting at least 60 days prior. So there's multiple steps, not unlike an override, that are needed.
One or the other.
Oh, is it one or the other?
You can, you can go town meeting, then ballot, or ballot, then town meeting.
So we could do it in May.
But as I mentioned earlier.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can we, after select woman Zarowski has a chance to speak, if she wants to speak, could we confirm that with Attorney Henigan? Because that's not my reading of the law, Joe. I could be wrong. I'm, that's, I mean, I'm fine.
I know it has to have to do both.
What's that?
It has to do both.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So do you require it to?
No, that's why, I mentioned earlier, it's required to go to the actual ballot, either way, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Joe, I, I see.
Have a moment here? Thank you. So I, in my opinion, again, we just spent about an hour or so talking about how we, you know, promoting in within the departments and how much we value our people's, our town people and the people who actually put so much time and effort into everything that they do. I can't think about anybody else more devoted to, not just to the town, but to the, to the position that she's holding for how many years?
Well, 14 in there, so.
So that's that. So that goes for me with the qualifications and the, and the basis of, of that. My, my vote will be 100% on, on pushing that through and you deserve every, every moment of it. I just, I'm just getting confused because we seems to be favorizing some where we are scrutinizing the other a little bit more. So this, this, I'm not really fine with. But I, I will, you know, promote that and I will work very hard to make sure that, that it's going to be at a point in position, anything I can do with my vote votes. And I do ask Pete to appreciate people voting. And this is just us, my understanding is just getting that through the town.
Mr. Chairman, just for those at home, could we ask Attorney Henigan just to clarify the process?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, good evening to you members of the board. Process is that the Board of Selectmen would, I presume, be the ones to offer a warrant article that would go to town meeting. At the annual town meeting, it would be up or down. If it passed, there would be then a ballot question put on the next election that would be held for the town. If this was to take place at a special town meeting, it would, before that election, it would have to take place, that special town meeting would have to take place 60 days prior to that election.
So if we, if we map this out for the 2026 election, Karen still needs to run.
Unless, through the chair.
No, unless.
Why not?
How?
We call a special town meeting?
Yeah.
Additional call.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Well, I'm just saying, but that's, that's definitely an option. We could have a special town meeting 60 days before our May town election. And then that would solve the problem. Or, to your point, we wait another
Cycle.
Another cycle.
So we can have a ballot vote and then a town meeting vote on this?
No. You have to have a, a approval by town meeting and then it would go to ballot. The statute does not allow you to go to a ballot vote and then go to town meeting, if that's what you're asking. The statute's very clear.
So there would either be a year delay or we call a special town meeting, which, again, that'd be up to the board as a whole to figure out.
And, you know, we get minimal participation and attendance in regular town meetings.
Hey, hey, we have 55 people.
Adding another one I am not in favor of.
Can I, can I just speak? So next year in '26, I am up for reelection. So I, most of this, the, the whole topic really, it doesn't, it's not going to affect me at all. I mean, I'm probably leaving in a few years, I'm retiring. So I think that's what my concern is for the town, is my assistant, Elise, is amazing. She lives in Dudley, so there is no possibility, you know, I know she would still have to be, you know.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I'm going to ask Karen is not to go down that road for many reasons. One, I would not want to create the impression that we're doing things and taking actions in order to enable a particular person to get a job.
Right, and I
Would look bad.
Yeah. And that's why I didn't want, I didn't want to say that because it's not about that. But my concern is about the department. So right as it is, there's no option for that. So in probably three years, I'm probably going to be gone. And there's no, there's no one out, there will be someone new, is what I'm saying. So it's either someone new who has qualifications or it's someone new at the ballot box, which is fine. It's probably the first time, I'm not sure, back, as many town clerks as I can remember, it has been a succession from the assistant then ran for town clerk. So it, this is probably the first time in a long time that that's not even an option. So it's fine, I'm not, you know, like I said, I want to use, people are saying it's not part of it at all. But that, you know, we can wait another year, I can run, I'm, hopefully I'll get in. If not, I guess retire a little bit earlier. So, but that is, you know, that is, I'll be, you know, I'm 63, so it's only a few more years. So that's my concern for the town. I'm, I've done, I feel I've done a great job and I've, in that department, and I don't want to see anything happen to the department or the town if things go badly.
And that's exactly my point. You know, we recognize not everybody's in their roles forever. I'm not going to be in this seat forever, but one thing we can do forever is vote forever. So, you know, that's, that's my stance.
I'd just like to make the point for the government study committee, we're talking about, quote, the town clerk. We're not talking about people of any kind. It's a title and we're recommending that title be appointed. So not that we don't care about people, but it's about the town clerk's position only.
Correct. And what I was going to point out in, in response, you know, Mr. Zarowski, to your point about believing in internal and everything else, 100%. And I, I've been consistent on that for 20 years, I'm not going to stop. The difference between fire, police and this is those discussions and internal discussions aren't changing our, in a way, actually changing our, our town government the way this would actually change, how our government would operate in one aspect. That's a big difference. And you're also correct in that we're not talking about personalities, we're talking about a position. And I think I said from the very beginning, this is not to diminish the role, you know, or what they've done. And if anyone's going to be offended, I think it'd be, there'd be some suggestions made by other members of this board. Karen has done a wonderful job. How many times have, how many challenges have we had for town clerk? I mean, that says it all, right? The people of Charlton are extremely pleased. Karen's done a great job. If she, if she had issues, we would have brought them up to her. I think she knows, everyone has thought she's done a great job. The committee's job is to do research and bring back recommendations to the town. Recommendations, not mandates. So they're going to form their opinions, valid opinions, but everyone's not going to agree on everything. I already have a feeling just from listening to everyone, how this vote's going to go. And it's still, regardless, is going to go to the people at a ballot. So no matter how you slice it, they're going to have their say in this.
Mr. Chairman, through you?
Yeah.
Again, I'm very much in favor of making it to be appointed and very much in favor of pushing this forward. I'm wondering additionally about process and then through you to Attorney Henigan. And I really don't know the answer to this. I, I think I do, but I really don't know. Because it's written in our bylaws, when our election and in town meeting are, are annual on both, we can't reschedule that, can we? Because in, because in past years, we've opened up the town meeting, closed it immediately, and then bumped it out a few weeks. And that's our annual town meeting. So if we were worried about money.
Good time.
When does that happen?
Because, well, well, actually, you know what? Here's the thing, and now, now I think about it, because, because the town meeting vote has to occur before the, the, the election. So we either have to, in theory, just for concept, yeah, like, like we would need to move. Yeah. And can we do that via bylaws?
Can you vote to amend?
Well, can, can we, without a town meeting vote, can we vote to move, again, I'm saying this hypothetical, move the voting day this year after town meeting?
I didn't look at that, but if it's in your bylaws as to what, if the bylaws say.
Yeah, it says specifically the date, and so I don't think we can. Yeah, I don't think so.
So, I mean, let's look at this objectively. How many, how long has a town clerk been elected position? Is one year really going to alter the course of the town if it decides to go that way? Are we really concerned? You know, we're looking to manipulate voting, town meetings. If it takes another year, it takes another year. I mean, that's the will of the people.
Just one question. The, the election, is this usually the first article of the town meeting? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you've got the, the town meeting there, I don't see how you could change.
Yeah, I mean, I would look at it personally as, again, I might be in the minority, I'd be fine having, having a special town meeting in the spring for this, but again, I may be in the minority. So what I'd like to do is, at least for tonight, is make a motion that we start the process for making the proposal for the town clerk's position to become appointed. I think the, the plan to get there, we're going to have to discuss, you know, over the next couple of months, if not sooner, to see if we want to wait the year or whether we want to call it. Because really, I think the only two options, to be honest, are going to be special town meeting or we do it at this town meeting and then wait till next May for the actual ballot vote. And Attorney Henigan, I'm assuming that there's no statute limitations on that, that as long as we, okay. So I think, I really think those are our two options. But again, I'm very much in favor of, of proceeding with this. The roadmap on like how to get there, we might debate on over the next few meetings, but personally, I'd like to at least get the ball rolling to, to start that process.
So let's just say, I know he has a motion, there's no second yet. So I'm not sure if I'm allowed to have the discussion at this point.
Give it a second.
So, no, but, so assuming this passes tonight, is there a way then to, and I'm just trying to play off what you're thinking, to get it on May? Or it's just not?
It's honestly, it's, it's just not possible. Based upon our bylaws, it's just not possible.
You'd have to have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Before.
I agree with you, I don't want to pay for special elections, money, work, now you start confusing.
It's, it's not even paying, it's about the participation. We're challenged as it is.
That you're going to confuse people with multiple amount of elections, like what elections for what? So no matter how it goes, pass or fail, whether it fails tonight, passes tonight, goes on the next election, as far as I'm concerned, that is all secondary to a decision being made tonight, one way or the other, because a decision's made to either move forward with it or not.
Yeah, that's why I would say that I'd recommend we focus the conversation tonight through my colleagues of, do we want to advocate for the voters to have a vote on this? If the answer's yes, within the next couple of meetings, we can discuss how, the roadmap on how we want to get there. But again, I really think there's two options. Early, early special town meeting for this and then it goes on, on the May election, or we just put it on the May 17th or whatever it is, like, our, like annual town meeting and then next May is when the voters would actually vote on it. Those, to me, I think are the only two options.
I think you're, you're both, you're both right.
No.
I think Pete, I agree with Pete in not having a special.
Why can't it be a?
I agree with Pete.
Ballot vote.
But through the chair, I, I agree with the chair also in that if, if the, if the vote passes tonight, it's not the end of the world. Charlton's not going to collapse and implode if the ballot took the following year. In other words, you're making a decision tonight, which means this is off the table, it's been decided. But if it did take that extra time to not have to confuse voters, spend more money unnecessarily, the town's not going to disappear. The world wouldn't end.
And Mr. Chairman, just as a quick reminder to those in the audience at home, the MGL specifically talks around only after majority vote of the annual or special town meeting and then subsequent acceptance by the voters at the annual town meeting. There's, there's additional MGL that says that if the vote's taken place at a special town meeting, it shall take place at least 60 days prior to the acceptance of the voters at the annual town election. So the annual town election, no matter what, is the thing that is written in stone. It's really just a matter of, do we, do we call a special beforehand or do we wait a year for that, for, for that piece?
I thought, I thought the idea was we'd figure that out after that, we're going to motion tonight to.
Yes, 100%. Yeah, no, I just want to make, put it, put it, my colleagues, just, and the people at home of, this is more complex than you would think. But again, anyway, I had my motion on, on the floor that I want to proceed with this.
Nobody seconded it, so.
You didn't second it, you saw it.
No, it's just kind of.
Can you just make the clear motion?
The clear motion is at this point, to reiterate, that my motion is to proceed with a roadmap that, to allow the voters to have final say on whether the town clerk's position will be elected or appointed. How we go about doing that, we can hash it, I think we can hash it out o, o, over the next month or two. But it, but it's that simple. I'm saying that let's put it to a, to a public vote.
So your, your motion is essentially make this an article for the next town meeting?
Make it simple.
Yes. I'm not, I'm not sure when that will be, but yes, that's exactly right. Yeah.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
All opposed? No.
Aye. No, aye. No, I'm good.
What? I'm sorry, Pete, can we do that again?
It was three to two.
Three to two. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All opposed? No.
Okay.